Now we'll move on to the treasurer's report. Claims?
Tonight in the general fund, there are 38 claims totaling 266,576,01. Municipal Road Eight, three claims, 1,007,4642. Parks Fund, nine claims, 5,049,369. Cabinet Improvement, four claims, 6,005,3340. Prepaid out of the general fund belongs to 31st with 14 claims totaling 41,739,26. Parks Fund, one claim, $882.90. For Bellevue, two claims, 45,224,74.
Going to turn the claims over to council member Slater. I had looked at them and I have a possibility of a conflict of one of the claims, so.
After looking through them, everything seemed to be in order and I'll make the motion that all claims be paid.
Motion by Dave Slater. Second by Ryan Saltzman. Any bills? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Present.
Move on to the council reports. Do you have any?
Yeah, I went to the school board meeting last week, or week before. I didn't have much to tell them, but they wanted to pass along some sincere thanks to the city at the beginning of the semester that the change of signage outside of Bellevue that was done very quickly, they said. Also the tree trimming down on Tiger Lane. They called up here and I don't know if it's within the day, but they said it was very fast and they wanted to be, wanted to pass on their thanks for that. I'm sitting on a facilities planning board committee of some kind for the district as the community representative, and they are working through their current facilities plan. I don't think anything that would affect us, but I'll be sure to keep you posted over the next three meetings that we have. And then another thing that's been a topic of discussion with at least some of the community members regarding the schools, and it's worth noting is that there's been a change to the Cincinnati Public School policy of camping out for admission into some of their magnet institutions. And people both inside and outside the community, and inside and outside the school industry, the education industry have expressed how Bellevue as a community really can stand to benefit from that. So while there's some people that are very upset in Cincinnati, that to be clear, our schools are in great shape and they're getting even better and there's a lot of excitement about not having to camp out everywhere. See, we also might as well roll right into the Economic Development Committee. Has met a couple of times, have been very busy. You have in front of you the TIF preliminary, so we met for over an hour yesterday and moved forward with Jim Parsons who presented us two of us last time. And a few more questions out there, also somebody from Steve Pendry's office. Who's that running?
I'm Scott Cutt, the Economic Development Committee for Campbell County.
Great, thank you. That economic development individual for Campbell County was there to discuss that they have a lot of experience with it. And this is kind of a rough drawing, kind of first iteration of the TIF district, actually with an extension however, down Fairfield all the way to Lafayette instead of stopping at Berry. But kind of the property around and behind Desmond Insurance and in that area if you want to kind of draw that on. There's been a lot of discussions about it, but I think everybody there was very confident. Keith and Jody are, you know, welcome Matt to jump in and say something about it, but I think everybody's very confident that, you know, that was a great kind of starting area and offered the most potential for that upward growth that they talked about, that if we have the upward growth, then that's the increment that can be rolled into that. Decided to, for the time being, exclude some of the things we talked about, the Beach Park area, we talked about Mary Ann, we talked about up and down Fairfield. This seemed to be the most revenue generating area of the plan, so it seemed like the most reasonable to go first and foremost.
Yeah, I talked to Jim Parsons today, kind of in that next step, just making sure we're all on the same page. We're going to present him with a map, which I think Scott did this, with the changes Ryan's talking about. Jim is going to kind of put together a preliminary proposal for kind of laying out what we need and what his services would be and the cost to do so. So I think we'll kind of be trading documents with him, us getting him the map and him getting us a proposal. While we're talking about the economic development, we've got a couple of guys here tonight to talk about EPAD. We met last week to discuss that, over the end of the manager's report. We're going to give a great presentation. Economic Development Committee has looked at that, has reviewed the ordinance that Covington adopted, and obviously, you know, some work changes, overview to Covington and vice versa, et cetera, but we support that, so hopefully we'll have all the council's support. They'll explain that in much greater detail. And not really a council liaison report, but what I've got before, I see a lot of signage for the park and emails. Everything's referencing the Bellevue Beach Park. We need to make the change to the Thomas J. Wehorn, I forget the exact name, I don't have it in front of me, but everybody knows what the change in the name is. And I'd like to get some sort of idea about when we can expect some signage for the park and possibly a rededication of sorts. I'd like to have that happen right away. It'd be nice to get it before winter and even if it happens in the winter, I don't want to wait until next spring, so. Keith, is that something you can start getting some proposals for?
Oh, we're going to tend to.
Signage and certainly in the meantime, you know, any signage that we have made up and, you know, websites you can change in a matter of minutes. If we can make that change, that's it for me.
Yeah, and I don't know with the TIF planning, if you've had time to review the map that was left with us and based on our report, if you feel comfortable making a motion to move forward again with the planning for the TIF and specifically of getting a firm, not plan, the plan from Jim, cost, what this exact one, because until we know a lot of those logistics, there's really no way for him to be able to give us an understanding of what it is that we're dealing with.
Personally, I'm sorry. Personally, I'd like to learn more about the TIF before we go moving forward with any of that. I have a couple of questions on the map anyway. I have questions, you know, on the TIF itself.
What are your questions?
Well, I think they'd be too much to get into here, especially since this is supposed to be just the liaison thing, but I want to learn more about the TIF.
Can you prepare a list and have it ready in a week?
I will wait. Are you meeting again with him next week?
We'll be meeting with him sooner than later and I don't want this to be held up.
Dave, do you want to give your questions to me? I'll answer for you.
Okay.
I make a motion and we go ahead and move forward with the TIF and any final motion. If anybody has any questions, second.
I don't think we have enough, the council itself has enough information, but we have one presentation, that's it.
One can clarify what I think you're thinking. What Matt's implying is we want to keep moving, not necessarily hey, approve this thing to Maggie, but we want to approach Jim with the idea of what's this going to cost the city? So we can at least get more information from him. Then that's when the decision process works out, with your questions and okay, this is going to cost us a NIPR 98 or whatever. So it's more, not necessarily hey, approve this thing, it's going tomorrow, it's more we want to keep working and we want to keep working forward.
With your permission until?
That's my understanding.
That is exactly.
We're done with that motion and I'm going to move forward. I'm waiting for them to keep meeting and get information. So formal.
And I know that Keith is volunteering to take questions. Jim will definitely take any questions directly, he's extremely, a lot of people have known him for a while, so you don't feel like you have to go through a conduit to reach out to them, you know, or other sources, there's people, I'm sure experts about it around and on the other side of the river, if you want somebody other than Jim's opinion, so.
Would you go in?
Sure.
He seems to be an expert in it, so.
I defer him, but I don't expect anybody else to, and I'm sure he'd be happy, happy to entertain those.
He knows it inside and out.
Yeah, he seems to.
Right. Your explanation. Good. Got a motion in a second.
Got a motion in a second to direct staff to continue with meeting with Jim Parsons and Economic Committee and try to formulate a proposal, so we know exactly what we're dealing with. We have kind of a sketched out map of, so he can take that forward. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, word.
Fireboard Mets and have a new firefighter medic onboard, resignation, and part of the discussion was concerning the new proposed aerial and trying to get some cost estimates together for the vehicle to replace the 26-year-old truck. And pretty much for us, that would all defer to Mike and his report.
That's it? Okay. Anyone else have any? Bring it forward. Now we'll move on to my report. Just a couple of quick things. Hats off to everybody who's participated in the Senior Citizens Picnic this year, it was a huge success once again, sold out show. Thanks to Mary and all the hard work that she puts into that every year. Our seniors have a day to enjoy with us and staff looks forward to it. And thanks to all the businesses who donate their prizes to the effort and without them that couldn't happen. So it was another great picnic for our seniors. Coming up this weekend, obviously, is our last concert in a park. And Art in a Park will take place Saturday morning from 11 until 5, followed by the last concert of the summer concert series, 7 o'clock with a local band, Whiskey Tango. So make it down to the park early and spend the day down there. Hopefully Mother Nature will cooperate. With us tonight is Chris Jones and Jeremy Faust from the Greater Cincinnati Energy Alliance to discuss the EPAD program in Kentucky and possibly taking advantage of that here in Bellevue, so. If you guys wish to address, thanks for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity to talk with you this evening. I am Jeremy Faust, a resident of the West in the city of Newport, where I've lived for about a year. And it didn't take me long to realize the best view in the region is from the hills in Bellevue, so it's a pleasure to be here speaking with you this evening. I'm here to talk a little bit about, as the mayor referenced, a new economic development tool, as this loan is up here, called EPAD, which stands for Energy Project Assessment District. All right, now we're off and running. And this is really a new tool to the state of Kentucky, as adopted by statute down in Frankfurt earlier this year, to help revitalize old infrastructure, improve that infrastructure, specifically focusing on the energy and water components of buildings. You know, historically, and I should pause before I talk a little bit about the tool, give you a little more background on myself. I work for an organization called the Greater Cincinnati Energy Alliance. We are a regional nonprofit organization that provides services to residents and businesses throughout the region in the area of energy efficiency, really trying to upgrade buildings in the region. We're all familiar with the old infrastructure that's costing a lot of money to keep heated and cooled. We're trying to drive the investments in those buildings and save people money to put folks back to work and approve those buildings. Historically, the way we've operated in that space has been a lot about subsidies and incentives for those projects. And Duke Energy offers some of those incentives, the state offers some of those incentives. This new economic development tool is really a different approach to getting a lot of that worked on. It's more focused on free market principles, is totally voluntary and doesn't encumber any public funds. So what is EPAD? As I mentioned, it stands for Energy Project Assessment District. Nationally, this tool is sometimes known as PACE in the 31 or two other states where they're using this to improve their building infrastructure. And it's all about property owners who are looking for a mechanism to make investments in their buildings to upgrade. So any sort of energy and water related infrastructure you have, from heating and cooling equipment to upgraded high efficiency lighting, to insulation and air sealing improvements, improvements to motors, pumps, drives, automation systems, new water efficient technologies, et cetera. A lot of the work that businesses know they need to improve upon, but for one reason or another are having trouble identifying the resources necessary to make those improvements. What EPAD does is it creates a mechanism for those businesses to finance projects to improve their buildings over an extended term. And typically, a business might go to the local bank, they may take out a five or seven year loan to do any sort of building infrastructure improvement work, and in many cases, that works quite well. In others, it's a challenge. Sometimes that five or seven year term isn't long enough. And specifically, it's not long enough to allow the energy savings that these projects often generate to repay the cost of financing. So if you can extend that financing term and the energy that the building, the property owner is saving, let's say the few hundred or a few thousand dollars a month they're saving on their energy bill can be used to pay the cost of the financing, they're in a kind of net positive cash flow situation, where they're saving more money than they're spending to finance the cost of the project. It's a win for the business owner, obviously, and it's a win for the building because you're getting those energy improvements, those water efficiency improvements being made. The way EPAD does this is through a special assessment. And that assessment is essentially measured to cover the costs of the improvements of the building and creates a very secure repayment stream for the property over a series of 15 or 20 years to pay back the cost of that project. The capital for these projects, both in other states and as we bring a model into Kentucky, is financed through third-party capital. So there are banks and other financial institutions who are looking at this as a new way of investing in projects. They see the EPAD assessment as a very secure way to make an investment in a project and recoup the savings. The critical portion in the city's role, of course, is helping to structure that assessment, to place the assessment and helping with the collection process so that the money can be repaid. So I referenced a couple of the benefits associated with how this process works and being able to attract 100% of the cost of doing a lot of this building upgrade work, which is of course very crucial to building owners. Down to number four, we talk about transferability and the prospect of selling a property. A lot of the work we do with property owners, they're contemplating some significant improvements to the building. They may want to make half a million dollars in upgrades to their structure, but they're contemplating what's the return on investment, when are they going to get that money back in terms of the energy savings, and how long are they going to be in the building? So if there's a 12-year payback on a series of improvements that a building owner is making, but they don't know how long they're going to be in that building, they don't want to be saddled with that debt if they end up leaving and another property owner moves in. So one of the unique benefits associated with the EPAD process and having that assessment on the property rather than on the property owner, it allows for transferability if the property is sold. So the building is the thing that's being upgraded, that's what the assessment sticks with. Any new property owner is going to benefit from those upgrades that are made and the process can stay there with the building. So a quick overview of how this looks around the country. This map is a little dated, it doesn't have Kentucky yet colored in, but just recently, in the past month, the first program in the state was adopted in Covington. I was standing in front of the council members not long ago, having a similar conversation around the benefits this was going to create to the community, had a series of meetings with their economic development team, and they were very eager to use this as a new tool in their toolbox to help businesses within the city of Covington complete the sorts of energy and water efficiency upgrades that they recognize are needed throughout the community. So the tool is fairly broad in its application. Really, the only segment of property owners this doesn't apply to is kind of your standard single-family residence. Works for your standard buildings, all sorts of commercial buildings, can work for government facilities as well as nonprofit organizations, multifamily building owners, et cetera. So pretty versatile tool. And then of course, you know, in the long run, and part of the consideration for this city is of course, what does the economic development benefit to the city? A lot of that is improving infrastructure, is trying to get the projects that are stuck that can't be completed over the hump so that they can move forward and be put to better use or back into use. Retaining and attracting businesses to the community that are looking to use these tools and take advantage of this opportunity to reinvest in their building and re-stay in the community. And then ultimately, those dollars that are saved, those energy dollars that aren't spent sending to Duke Energy every month, can be reinvested in that business, reinvested in those employees and reinvested in the community. As these programs develop and there's more projects incorporated into EPAD process, there's obviously tax benefits to the city in the form of, you know, increased assessments, excuse me, increased property taxes for the buildings that increase in value and the payroll taxes from the increased work that's happening on that infrastructure. As we undertook the legislative campaign over the last few years, a pretty broad coalition of organizations that were supportive of the effort, a lot of conversations around the state and maybe in northern Kentucky to try to communicate the benefits. As a regional nonprofit working in southwest Ohio and northern Kentucky, we're very focused on making this a successful tool for our region and are privileged to be able to have conversations like this with municipalities throughout the region. So the process, should the city decide that this is a viable tool that it wants to pursue, typically starts with the adoption of an EPAD ordinance. There's a model that we've helped create and indeed, that's the model that the city of Covington adopted, so there's kind of a setup process for what this looks like. The Energy Alliance that's largely funded through the U.S. Department of Energy provides support throughout the way. We certainly want to work with the city of Bellevue and help and get this set up and working on the various components. Once the city would adopt an ordinance and say, all right, we're going to create an EPAD district and essentially open the doors to allow property owners to take advantage of this tool, it would provide a signal to businesses throughout the community that they could then come to the council and request inclusion in the EPAD district. And that process under state law comes with a set of requirements, there's a review of the kind of baseline energy consumption of the building and what sorts of improvements they're undertaking, how much money that's going to save them, all in the focus on trying to identify where the savings is and how that's going to create value for that commercial property owner. The Energy Alliance again would be happy to support the city in working to do that. And then once each project is approved, there's simply an additional assessment added to each property owner's bill that is voluntarily requested to be part of the program. So they see an EPAD assessment as a new line on their tax bill, and those dollars that they would then repay the city when that bill is due each year is used to finance the cost of the project. So we work with the investment community that wants to invest in the projects, they see value in the fact that cities like Covington and Bellevue would want to participate in the process and that they're willing to help structure these projects. The projects are completed and then the property owner repays that assessment over a term of 15 or 20 years. So that's generally the overview. I've been noticing as I was sitting at the beginning of the meeting, the motto of the city on the wall behind you, preserving the past and preparing for the future. It's certainly what this tool is all about. It's taking some of the aging infrastructure in the community that we all know and love and figuring out a way to make it useful, to make it work for the property owners, for the businesses, so that they can stay here and continue to operate for a long time. Happy to take any questions if that's helpful and certainly willing to help in any way we can moving forward.
Take me through a typical business that might want to invest in this and how the city actually collects. The city has no money, no taxpayer money in this at all, right?
Correct.
Other than adoption of ordinance, that type of thing. And how's our payback? Or how's it payback by an assessment that we put on?
Yeah, the assessment is really the key. That's what creates the secure repayment stream that will allow the financial institutions, the banks, to put up money for an extended term. Typically, if they're dealing one-on-one with a property owner, they become another, perhaps in the line of mortgage lenders to that business. So if something goes wrong with the business, they may be second or third in line in getting repaid on any sort of foreclosure.
So this just moves them up?
So this moves them up in the process. Part of how that benefits too is again, because it stays with the property rather than the property owner, something can happen to one business, but that property may still be functional and allow for a new business to come in, continue enjoying the benefits and the improvements that were made so that they can continue paying those assessments on the property.
Say for example, if a business got foreclosed on and they were using this program, it would make the city collect the revenue due and put them at the top of the list along with the mortgage brokers.
Exactly.
So Steve, this would be perfect for Mary Ann. It needs a roof, it needs new HVAC, it needs insulation, it needs a whole host of other things. All of those things will fall under that, in addition to many more that I just listed.
This also be good for the school?
It'd be good for school, it'd be good for churches, it'd be good for any, it would be good for our building houses. Any old building that's greater than a four-family in town here would be good for it.
You don't often think about the energy components of the building being the main components of the building, but when you start adding up, as you reference, you know, the kind of pertinent features of efficiency, the insulation, the roofing, all the different kind of mechanical systems that are built and all the water and plumbing systems, it ends up being 30 or 50% of that building's infrastructure. So there really is a lot that can be done with the tool.
If you own a not efficient house, you understand about energy loss, for sure. We have a lot of those. I mean, our commercial buildings, most of them are, they're not new builds, they're buildings that have been here for at least 30 or 40 years.
So since 1878?
Yeah. I don't think.
Maybe I'm just misunderstanding, but if a business goes out, is the city responsible for repayment of that?
It's not. The city would send out that annual assessment that will have your standard property tax on it. You'll have a new line, I'm not sure if the city's done special assessments for other things in the past, but it would simply be a new line on the bill that would correspond to a specific amount for that property based on their repayment schedule for their project. So this wouldn't impact any other property owners other than those that are voluntarily asking to participate. If that property owner didn't pay, the city, like it would do with any delinquent tax, would proceed to attempt to collect with that property owner. As those dollars are collected, they are remitted, the city keeps its dollars for taxes due to the city, and then the dollars that were due to the EPAD assessment would go to whichever capital provider or bank provided those investment funds. And if for whatever reason that process takes a long time or it doesn't get paid right away, the investor has to wait longer for those dollars to come to it, but certainly none of the city's going to be at risk for these projects.
When did Covington adopt their ordinance?
Just last month. Legislation was approved in the spring in this most recent legislative session down in Frankfurt, and the cities around the state are starting to. in Frankfurt, and the cities around the state are starting to undertake the process, create these ordinances and begin the process for allowing these projects to go forward.
Currently, does Covington have anybody that's participated?
They do. There's about a half-million-dollar project in the city that's coming through the process now. It hasn't been officially approved by the city, but they're submitting their application documents to get everything set up and moved forward and will likely be the first in the state.
So on a default, what the city would be out would be the legal fees to try to collect that amount?
Well, the city would be out those fees anyway. This wouldn't add any additional burden to collecting any fees that we wouldn't already be trying to collect. I mean, Mike's going to have to go after him to collect $100 in tax or a million dollars in tax. The burdens there built in.
No, I just.
Can I ask one more question, please? The assessment in the beginning, you said they had to come to council, and then there has to be an assessment on who's doing the assessment?
So in terms of, you know, the project review on the building, whatever contractor that the property owner likes to work with, they come up with a scope of work for their project. They typically have vendors that they're comfortable with. We've got a network of folks that we've worked with and kind of certified in the past. Whoever they're comfortable working with, they bring that project to the city. In Covington, we're working with the city to help them review those applications as they come in. We've developed a series of standards on making sure that there's efficiency with those projects, making sure that those energy savings, making sure that the property owner has paid their taxes in the past, so you're not dealing with a historically delinquent property owner. And then ultimately, the city has to make the decision to place the assessment on the tax bill, and then that would get incorporated as part of the internal process.
But does the city pay, is Covington paying you guys to come in and help them go through those assessments and go through that?
They're not. Well, thank you all very much. Happy to answer any follow-up questions if that's helpful in that day's hour, but thanks for the time.
Thank you.
I think it seems like we've got very many people.
Hold on.
There's a bit of a follow-up. I'll have the ordinance for everybody next to me. I'm going to go forward from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have on my report. We'll move on to Keith's report.
Everybody has my report. It's kind of been an SD1 kind of date, one kind of thing. Working with SD1 to solve a couple of problems. Our Riviera sewer replacement project seems to be going okay at this point in time. No major issues have been reported. We are working with SD1 on a couple of different projects, you know, kind of pushing them down the line. One is replacement of a sewer on Friday Avenue, that's a sanitary sewer, and they are allowed, they being SD1 has requested an easement from the city for some of our railroad property. We're reviewing that. We had some discussion about that today. We have been dealing with SD1 about some flooding issues along the Culvers and Creeks, like in the stadium area, behind some residents on Culver Run. SD1 is looking into any kind of solution. I don't know what they can do, what to expect from this point, but it's my report to council, we are working on it. Few other things, most importantly, I guess tomorrow night, I will be sitting down with the residents of North Sherry, South Sherry, Bonnie Leslie, and some residents from Taylor. I don't have all the agreements in place for the folks on Taylor regarding the hazardous mitigation grant process. If you recall, we did receive a grant. And Deeland, we signed a contract, we council approved a contract last month to enter an agreement with them. I'm going to sit down with the residents and just kind of explain the process to them, give them an informational update. That's tomorrow night at 7:00 here, if you're interested in attending.
Do you have any questions? How were they notified?
I notified the ones where, if you remember last month, we had two, we have two contracts for North Sherry, Bonnie Leslie, and then South Sherry, Bonnie Leslie, North Sherry, those all had, because I know where the bore holes, where they want to test, they got letters from me. The ones on Taylor, I don't have any kind of agreement, but the ones I had phone numbers for.
You wanted to have.
I've called them. So it's a bit of a late notice form, but I did talk to them, some of them on Saturday, Friday, Saturday. I made a call on Tuesday, too, so we're late in that process. But once I have an agreement with those, we'll sit down with the Taylor folks, like, here's what it shows. So they were notified by hand courier or by phone call.
I have a question on the SD1 down on Culver Run. Where the sinkhole was, let's see where they pulled out some old culvert and replaced, or is that the only section that they're going to take care of is where the sinkhole was?
That's the only section, and actually, that's not SD1 replacing that, that's the property owner, because the property owner actually made that improvement 20, whatever how many years ago. They were working with, that's what, at least they coordinated with SD1 to make sure they put the proper stuff in, but that is on the homeowner dime.
Okay. What lockup?
Six hundred, seven hundred.
It's on.
Right before the trailer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The lady that addressed council last time.
That's pretty means, yeah.
Yeah, has her issue, is there anything new on that?
Nothing new, maybe something old, but I've been, the time I've had, I've been up in our room looking over old maps and stuff, so I'm trying to find, like I addressed council. I found an old map, it's got some suspect lines on it, so I'm trying to coordinate with that with a new map. So we're working, but it gets slow going, try to review the old stuff, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Hi, before I go into what's coming up with interview, any questions about my staff Okay, as the mayor mentioned, Art in the Park is happening this Saturday from 11:00 to 5:00. It is going to be great. We might be dancing between some raindrops, but it will be a great event, arts, crafts, things for kids, local music will include, friends of Bellevue are bringing us craft beer, so that's new this year, as well as Generation Hill being there with their local wine. So we're very, very excited. We also do have two children's book authors that will play very nicely with the children's activities. So that's another feature. We'll be doing some fun social media contests as well to engage the community. So please attend, we could always use more volunteers. It takes a lot to put on an event like this and give the service that we want to give to not only the artists but the patrons as well. Then we're going into October, and so we are starting with a Halloween theme, imagine that. We are going to pink that up a little since it is breast cancer awareness month. And so essentially, which is even deserve a light off, so come down to the avenue for shop Bellevue first Friday. So it'll be the traditional, just have a great time, shop, eat, eat, that sort of thing. And then we are going to do candy corn and crafts again for the third Saturday celebration, so we will have craft stations throughout the avenue for families to partake. So that is it, and then we're gearing up for Christmas, so watch out, guys.
Scotty, it's the zoning administrator. If you see my staff reports, you can see that we've identified the final three, not the final, the minimum of three meetings that we will meet for the rest of the year because there's only a planning commission which will fulfill state stature of getting our total number of meetings for the year. We have, still have two zone changes on the docket, one for Shady Terrace, the second one for the what is currently a zone shopping center, which is the area over near Riviera Drive that includes the Holiday Inn, Chase Bank, Fisher's, and the Medical Arts Building. That was left as a shopping center zone, we're looking at changing that to T5 to be consistent with all the other zones around it. We have a board of adjustments meeting Monday, the 21st, to hear about a front yard setback, which is not anything major. In addition to that, I have a, for you and your recorder, request for the release of funds for one of our rental conversion projects that has been finished from a two-family to a one-family. And in addition to that, I wanted to bring you an update on two projects, the Ross condo project, we've driven by, we've got that street all cleaned up, we've got the silks holes out, we've contacted both the owner and the county commercial building inspector to make sure that that is maintained, that street is maintained, and more than, with a specific interest in making sure that that storm drain does not have anything washed down it inappropriate or that would clog it downstream. In addition to that, you may have seen yesterday, the site at Arby's was, they were beginning to mobilize, they have a site fence around it, they have tore up the parking lot, and they are ready to move as fast as they can to bring the new store, which meets all our Form 8 code in it as soon as they can. So we're excited about that.
Is that new store going on the old store footprint?
No, no. It's going to the west. It's going all the way to the west to the, what would be the northwest corner.
That's what I thought, but they're closing the new store?
Yeah.
That seems like a.
It has to do with utilities, yeah.
Utilities?
Yeah. They didn't want to go lights out, but it had to do with the utilities and then a high percentage of their business is going to the drive-through, so there's a cost benefit that they needed to look at.
Gotcha.
So it's been very, very cooperative, the commercial building inspector's been very cooperative, so.
How long do they estimate that they'll be closed?
I don't have that in front of me. It seemed like it was the spring, you know, that they were looking, you know, it'd be the early, early summer, late spring. It's more than 90 days.
Yeah, I'd imagine that's about a six-month build, so we're losing checks on that the whole time they're closed?
But you're gaining the contractors' work.
I understand, like I said, I thought they were going to be in the parking lot next door, just assumed that they were wanting to stay open.
Well, they looked at that, I mean, that was their original intent, but there was just no way that economically they could do that. Again, a high percentage of their business, over 50%, comes to the drive-through of that particular store. It may change with the new store, with the new layout, the new dining amenities that they offer.
Shady Terrace, what are they proposing for Shady Terrace?
Shady Terrace, they're proposing, they want, they have proposed to rezone it as a R3 multifamily district, which is a very high-density district. We have an area of that which is up on the hill in the condos, but when the condos were built, they were built with a development plan. A development plan is an excellent way to develop that piece of property, it's a two-stage process, and it actually lets us know definitively what is being proposed on it. The plan that was brought before me was, I believe, five buildings, 90 units, with a text to say not to exceed 100 units. The preliminary report has been sent to the owner, and it's, my preliminary recommendation has been to deny, that there's a myriad of questions when we bring in the development that are not just zoning, but they're zoning, but they impact upon infrastructure, quality of life surrounding neighborhoods, and so we'll see if, that's scheduled, but we'll see if they want to go through with it at this time. The proper, what I would say would be the proper way to present a plan like that would be to have a definitive plan and it be submitted as a development plan because it locks us in to what is actually being built.
And I'm not so sure that that storm work shed can take a lot more added to it in the form of roofs and, you know, just.
A development plan allows us to look at those metrics much more closely than just changing a map amendment, which is actually quite permissive in allowing density. I'd be happy to share the preliminary report with you. When you see the metrics in comparison to what you could max out, of course, there's a, that also falls under our hillside ordinances, which are over 20%, which limits a portion of the property, but you still, you still have about close to that, between eight and 11 acres, that could be fully developed and maxed out as an R3, even though someone submits a plan, because we're doing a map amendment, not a development plan, and so.
Are you expecting like a PUD when you're setting a development plan or?
Well, we have a two-stage development plan, yeah, and it locks in what is the mix of units. I mean, right now, I have five buildings that says 90 units. I don't know if they're two-bedroom, one-bedrooms, three-bedrooms, I don't know what the mix is, so I don't know what the maximum impact on the surrounding community is. There's a number of challenges, the completeness of what was presented. I believe what was presented has been presented before to the city and has met with some.
The last thing I saw had a lot of holes in it, but, you know, to Steve's point, I assume we'll have underground retention that'd be required there? Yeah, I mean, we spent a lot of money on the lower end of Culver Run, but to keep those.
There's a lot of those things, but please understand, I'm looking right now, because it's not a development plan, I'm looking at as somebody wants to propose to change the map amendment, and I have to look at how permissive that change is. I'm not, I am looking at how much density could be maxed out on it. And all those things you talk about, you reference to, are really, really important, but this particular analysis is just from a sheer density, it impacts the quality of life. That is exactly why we've always, I believe in the past, I've always asked for, yes, a two-stage development plan is what other, across the river, we would call it a PUD. And so that would be the proper way, and that would allow us much more level of investigation into those things. It'd allow us an opportunity if we needed, if we needed additional data on the impact of traffic on Culver Run, it would allow us to request a transportation.
Yeah, that should be a given.
Right. I mean, there's many given things.
I know we call it different things across the river, but you know, PUD, keep in mind, allows more flexibility, whereas you're saying more concrete. So that's a, I know you've got experience across the river, I think we need to, you know, it sounds like they're trying to do a kind of back of the neck, and we need to make sure it's 100 units, it's 100 units, here's the mix, the density, it sounds like you're on it.
Yeah, many people bring a lot of challenging drawings, and I don't pick winners and losers, I just read the code and we apply it that way and encourage other processes to help everybody deal with it.
Thank you.
I just wanted, go ahead. I just wanted to tell Scott thank you because at the high school, we had literally, I think, what, three-day notice of a student that needed to change the handicap parking for the school, and Scott was on it and had our guys out there within two days, the day before school started, had a change, and it's worked out really well for him.
It's our pleasure.
Thank you.
One that up at Robson Ross, did you get with SD1 to get them to check the drain?
I will, I will follow up and do that.
Okay, because there's a lot of dumped concrete right in there. Can you get down in there?
I know, I saw it.
Okay, thank you.
I was disappointed there wasn't a silks, it's going.
Yeah, I appreciate you getting one in for me.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Hopefully you have my report there before you all accept taking your questions at this time. Any questions?
You got it easy.
Thank you.
To share the traffic study information.
I saw you, you want to talk about the traffic study?
Any questions?
You got it easy.
Thank you.
Just sharing the traffic study information.
I saw you, you want to talk about the traffic study?
I think so.
Yeah. It's in there. But the good thing about the traffic study that we put in, you know, we did two traffic studies on one varying around Anspaw. We did them two different weeks. The very first time, we had roughly 1,369 vehicles at greater than 30 miles per hour. That's posted 20 mile an hour zone there. The second time, we did, we put in a temporary stop sign. Hypothesis was obviously the stop sign was slowing down. The second study, we dropped that 1,369 vehicles at 10 or greater, we dropped that number down to 176. So that's a substantial decrease in traffic out there. At the same time, we had 600 and some odd vehicles increased in our count. So that was the week school started.
Yes, all my teachers are very unhappy. I told them to get over it.
Well, the other part of that is we're going to have to increase obviously the presence up there. I mean, that's the next part of this, obviously through the education and presence of petroleum and something there. Actually stop any sightings. So that's the next chapter in that story. But obviously to do that, you need to make the sign permanent. And that's going to get to you guys.
The one thing I really thought was interesting was this stop sign took the average speed from 29 to 22 miles an hour up there.
It did. And then what we saw, we actually had one vehicle at 15 miles an hour. We were in the low 40s once the stop sign went. Any average high speed at the end of it. So that's substantial. You know, seven miles per hour doesn't sound like a whole lot, but that's roughly 12 feet per second. If you look at a vehicle moving and reaction times, think about 12 feet of collision, that could be the difference of life and death.
Thanks, Chief. I appreciate you giving that.
Give me a mayor council.
Share some of the things you put on the fire department last month. Guys did provide hands-on training, fire extinguishers, CPR to the bus drivers in Dayton. Thought it went really well. Maybe it's something you can like that helped you get them together. They approached us and were like, one of this class, and we were able to get the equipment that we needed, put it on for his hands on the fire. So they were able to come up and put out some spot fires, extinguishers, and they went CPR. And we also did all the coaches' CPR. So we were able to run that form too. So since maybe they'll bring up to your next meeting, we'll be happy to assist. As Councilman Bedoule stated, we did hire a new firefighter. He started last month on the 12th. His name's James Navin. He brings 11 years' experience firefighting with Covington. And he also flew on a medical helicopter out of Frankfurt. He's from this area, wanted to get back in the fire service. I did talk to his past Covington's chief and for the medical helicopter that he worked for. And so he's a great employee. Interviewed very well. So we're happy to have him. He's doing a great job. Firefighters also, they did participate with the Bellevue Senior Citizens Appreciation Lunch. I thought it was a big success again. The guys did assist farming Joe with blood pressures and fire safety tips to our seniors. We did have a fireboard meeting on August 19th. Our next one's October 20th. It'll be at 6 o'clock, the fire station. At our last meeting, we did present three awards to three different firefighters and one captain for a rescue that was done on the river last month. So that went over really well. Last week, we had a surprise by St. Elizabeth Hospital. They did provide us, bring down 75 free vials of Narcan, which go for 3960 apiece. And that saved our budget on our medical supplies, $2,970. They did give us Newport and Covington this Narcan. Also, as Councilman Bedoule stated, on the 3rd of September, around 8:30, E1 Fire Truck Company, they're from Florida, they were in the area, stopped by with a ladder truck what we were kind of looking at. Single axle, smaller wheelbase, the emissions, safety. There's just so much more than 24 years ago. We purchased this truck. It's out there. Something that's smaller to get around our streets and it's a little bit safer. This is the fifth truck they've had come by the fire station this summer. Captain Richmond's in charge of the committee. When they're in the neighborhood, either coming down 75 to go north or coming north going south, they can stop them by. The committee has been meeting, talking about financing, just seeing what's available out there, what's best for our community. So there's one more vendor that's going to stop by the firehouse next month. We'll send out an email for everybody to attend. We did have some council members attend this, the last time the truck was here. Thank you for coming. Any other questions on the truck right now? That's about all I have. The committee's doing a really good job with that. And also on the 25th, our firefighters hosted a North Kentucky Firefighter Association meeting. That was at the Training Center Cold Spring. About 60 people on hand and Motorola, they provided lunch for us. So that was nice of them. The only other thing I have is you're going to see a third person probably on our medic unit for the next couple of months. And what we do is we get the Cincinnati State Community College paramedic program students. They get to a certain point in their class and they have to do hands-on training right time. So they're using the Cincinnati code to order our medic unit because of what we're on by. So right now, they're on, running eight-hour days. They're not overnight. They come in the morning and do eight hours and then they leave. So they can get so many IV sticks, innovations and things like that. They have to have so many for their class and then they can move on to the next level of paramedic program. That's about all I have. Is there any questions?
Safer grant, when will we know?
Karen's checking every day. We haven't seen anything yet. She's checking.
But it's due any...
It could be at any time to the end of October.
Yes. Thank you.
Steve, would you have any other questions?
Yeah, I actually had a quick question. I know Keith, you've talked about it and a couple of the council people. The idea of finding resources for paid internship in the summer to, I'm looking at the code enforcement, part of the report in front of me here, to maybe assist with, I know we're not behind in our code enforcement, but to help kind of shore that. It seemed like there would be a need. And so it seemed like this would be a reasonable time to kind of see, if you will, that that could be a useful tool come summertime. I don't know that you were starting to think about the resources involved with that, but maybe we could move forward with thinking about that. Could just be during the summer months. There's a lot of great, the Cincinnati State guys coming in, you know, that's another set of hands to help with a crisis if needed. And not that this is the same thing, but we have lots of great graduate programs and undergraduate programs and people that'd be looking for that kind of support. So I don't know exactly what those resources would be. I assume if there's actual code enforcement involved or rental inspections, you would need to compensate something. But maybe talking to programs, I'd be glad to talk to the people I know at the NPA program at Northern and just kind of get some feelers before the winter sets in about that possibility.
Since you and I talked about this, Ryan, I actually talked to someone that's a level three code enforcement, or not code enforcement, level inspector. He said that a lot of times the cities, you don't, all you need to, you don't even need property maintenance certification to do some light code enforcement and light type of stuff. So, and, you know, in the past, the city has used interns. We use Don Martin, if you want to, you know, being intern, want to be in our city administrators. I Michael as well, started as interns in the code enforcement. So I echo your thing that you need to move forward with taking advantage of all the resources that are out there.
I know when we talked about it, it just seemed like a, kind of a simple help, definitely. And summer, it seems like would be the prime months for that, for school schedules and for the best weather that we have as well, try to get out.
It takes some load on the Terry as well.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. And focus on those things and definitely get caught up in the rental inspections.
What's the difference between using interns and the folks from the jail? I mean, not, are there any similarities as far as, do they have some sort of forms hurt or as far as insurance or?
It would be audited to find.
So I remember my days when I was an intern.
I always say I'm an intern and a inmate.
Catch me off guard there.
We don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can program setup.
There's, we can use programs.
Excellent.
Any else?
Not, we'll move on to audience participation. This is the course of the meeting. If anybody wishes to address the board or council, we do wish that you stepped to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Is this on?
I don't think it's on.
Thank you for listening to me. I want to apologize first, my appearance. I was busy online. Got a little too late into it and I didn't shave or anything like that, or I would have been looking a little nicer before y'all. So I apologize. I'm here to speak about your next thing.
Get your name and address for the record.
Douglas Ray Deaton Jr., 811 Berry Avenue, Bellevue, Kentucky. D-E-A-T-O-N. I'm here to speak about your next thing about unfinished business, the ordinance 2015-0801 approving stop sign at Berry and Anspaw. I've lived there 20, 23 years. I have a son who's now 27, who's been to school, been in the military, home safe and sound. I wouldn't let him ride a bike on that street. He's 27 now. When he was a child, I would not let him ride a bike. I'd watch him like a hawk on that street. You've heard a report about how many people go down it and fly through that stop sign? How many people go down it flying? And that's just when the study was up. As we all know, when somebody notices being watched, we're going to be a little more cautious. If those things weren't there, I guarantee you those numbers have been higher. The thing I thank God for the most is that my son or no other children in that neighborhood were killed. And that extra 12 feet of stopping time will come in handy now because they still do it. I live there, right on the corner. I see it all the time. I'm appreciative of the fact that you put in a temporary in there. They still run it. They still fly down that street. I think you got a good report there from the chief about one from over 1,600 to under 200. I can still live with that number, but even if one of them hit a child on the street, we talk about getting better people into our city, about upgrading our view of the city, how people look at our city. If they see these cars flying down that street and not stopping, we have more young children on that street now. That stop sign is needed. I'm here to ask you to vote yes on that. And if you vote no, I would like you to explain your no vote. I have a second thing on that. I had did a little research. I asked a few councilmen, talked to a couple of you. My understanding is that the city does not get any money from a speeding ticket and that it actually costs the city money to write that ticket. Is that true? Yes, is that yes?
Moving, from what I understand, moving violations are all...
We did away from municipal city courts in the 70s. We have a unified district court system, which means if I write you a ticket for $125 for a stop sign that goes to Frankfurt, they have what they call household 413 revenues. A small portion of that comes back, but it's pennies, pennies on the dollar.
Pennies on the dollar is what I was told, yes.
So it does cost us money.
So that's something we should take up with our local representative at state level?
Well, what you would have to do is increase the household 413 revenues to get some of that money back to the city.
Right. Because we were just talking about even moving violations. So if they run the stop sign and you write a ticket, we get pennies on the dollar back from that, right?
That's correct.
And you were talking about losing some tax revenue, Matt, you know, about the Arby's. Well, if you're writing these tickets, this money was coming back to the city. There's money being made up on tax revenues. LOL. I would appreciate that you do something about that stop sign, make it permanent. It is needed. Again, I can't tell you how many times where I just, my heart and my throat, my breath, children, nobody stops. The last time this was up, this is brought up before by not just myself, but other people, code enforcement showed up. And rather than putting in a stop sign, it was cut your bushes, it was fix your sidewalk, it was paint at the front of your house. We'll put a crosswalk in and teach your children how to use a crosswalk. That's a parent's job to do, not the city's. If you're going to put the crosswalk there, please put a sign up that says crosswalk also. Thank you for your consideration.
Jim Timon, 630 Truman Lane, 48-unit condominium up off of Lincoln Road. First of all, I'd like to thank Keith and Scott for taking the Cincinnati Bell was going to put a cellar pole 10 foot from our swimming pool up there with many things hanging, only about four according to the picture. But I just saw one over in Cincinnati the other day. It had about nine things hanging on it. So really looked bad and it was on a street corner. So thank you guys for taking care of that. The other thing is, we've been complaining about the water coming off of the hill over there on Truman Lane for years and years and years. And we've spent $10,000 ourselves trying to keep the water out of our, out of our carports. We have old people that can't walk in our carports in the wintertime because there's ice in there. And we've been promised for years that we're going to have sewers in the street. And I was here last January and I was told, we were told at that time that look for the surveyors in the spring. Well, it's fall almost, and we still don't have the surveyors. We have a few blue lines on the street and a continuation from the, I guess, the sewers or the water pipes are putting in on Lincoln Road. But they only go five feet into our road. So I don't know why they stopped there. If we're supposed to have all that put in our place before we get curbs and sewers and so. The president of the association can get here tonight. She asked me to come and try to get some answers. So what do I tell her?
Well, as, as we've talked about, the blue lines are actually the North Kentucky Water District surveying for their work as part of Lincoln Road. They're still working with KZF to finish that part. The ground surveying for the Lincoln Road project that you referred to should have been done.
No flags out anywhere.
You may not see flags.
Oh.
But I know that KZF is in design work for that. The whole idea is we want to keep that water that's rolling down off the hill, coming back behind Lincoln and then invading your carports there. If we intercept that water with a sewer system or catch basins up top, that's going to prevent a majority of that water from coming down into that.
Right.
That's the goal. Talking with the engineers about the project last week, week and a half ago, they're still working on the design project. It's, their nearest for sewer work will be probably starting in July, but they have to finish the design work. Now, I'm kind of surprised that, I'll check about the survey work, but that should, I'm of the opinion that's been done, but I'll check into that for you. And I'll give Donna a call about that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're talking about a needs and bounds survey?
I believe the needs and bounds have been done.
If they're designing it, would have had to have been, or they're designing on something that they don't know for what they're designing?
Correct.
My name's Joe Clare. I'm with the Catalytic Fund and I'm here to, one, first of all, tell you about an event coming up in Newport on September 27th, but then also to let you know that you should come to this event to see it because we do plan on continuing this fall and, or the spring in April here in Bellevue. The goal of the tour is to attract new residents, the businesses and people that aren't familiar with the area down into the urban core of northern Kentucky. We have great success in Covington. Back this past April, we're hoping to attract over 1,000 people from outside of the urban basin here in northern Kentucky to Newport this fall and hope to do an even bigger event next spring to bring in new people who aren't familiar with Bellevue to experience the great things here in the community. So again, I would like to invite you all on September 27th to come attend the Beyond the Curve initiative in Newport. And we hope to also go beyond the curve with you this coming spring.
Thank you.
What time is that?
The tour lasts from 11 to 4.
11 to 4? Thank you.
Ed Olfs, 357 Vanos Amian Bellevue. The other gentleman down there about the stop sign and that and talking about crosswalk. You can go down on Fairfield Avenue and they got crosswalks down there. They got signs down there too. You can count the many cars that are taking your life in your hands when you cross the street. They don't pay attention to them. I don't think the kids in school even learn how to cross the street anymore. When I was in kindergarten, that was a number of years ago, of course, they had, they had a stoplight in there and we were taught how to cross the street. People don't... People don't pay attention anymore. But you're lucky with the crosswalks down on the avenue. I see it all the time. I'm surprised somebody hasn't really got hit or hurt.
I just wonder if it's that lacking in our driver's education now. I mean, we were taught that a crosswalk, you stop. I don't think they're taught that anymore.
They're a morning man or something. Just look at us.
Anyone else? Move on to unfinished business. Motion read ordinance 2015-8-1, approving the stop sign on Barry and Anspall.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Dave, second by Steve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Still ordered. Ordinance number 2015-8-1, ordinance requiring all traffic on Barry Avenue approaching Anspall Avenue from the south to come to a complete stop before proceeding through said intersection and authorizing installation of a stop sign and other warnings at that intersection. Whereas the city council of the city of Bellevue, Kentucky finds and determines that the safety and welfare of its residents and visitors require that all traffic on Barry Avenue approaching the intersection of Anspall Avenue from the south may proceed through said intersection only after having first brought their vehicle to a complete stop. Now therefore being ordained by the city of Bellevue, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, all traffic on Barry Avenue approaching the intersection of Barry Avenue and Anspall Avenue from the south may proceed through said intersection only after having first brought their vehicle to a complete stop. Section 2, the city administrator or his delegates shall post a stop sign and paint the right of way indicating that it is unlawful for traffic proceeding from the south on Barry to proceed through the intersection of Barry and Anspall Avenues unless only after having first brought their vehicle to a complete stop.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dave Slater, second by Melissa, to approve ordinance 2015-8-1, first, second, and final reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Kirk Colerole?
Salzman?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Ologist?
Yes.
Tatum?
Yes.
Cadulli?
Yes.
I mean, all the unfinished business on the agenda, move on to new business. Motion to read ordinance 2015-9-1, setting the tax rate for the fiscal year 2015-16. Motion by Steve Cadulli, second by Dave Slater. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Still ordered.
Ordinance 2015-9-1, an ordinance levying an ad lorm tax rate for the fiscal period July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2016, on all property located in the city of Bellevue, Kentucky. Levying an ad lorm tax rate and establishing the rates therefore and adopting the Campbell County Property Evaluation Administrator's Assessment on said property and providing for a tax lien against all taxable property in the city of Bellevue to secure the payment of said taxes. The city council of the city of Bellevue, Campbell County, does hereby ordain as follows. Section 1, that there be an ad lorm tax for the fiscal year July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2016, on all property situated in the city of Bellevue, Campbell County, Kentucky. Said tax to be due on the first day of November 2015, delinquent on the first day of December 2015. All taxes which remain unpaid at the time they become delinquent shall be subject to a 10% penalty and a 12% per annum interest. The assessment of all property real and personal in the city of Bellevue, Kentucky, is made for the Campbell County Property Evaluation Administrator shall be and the same as hereby adopted as the assessment on said property for the city of Bellevue for the purpose of this tax. And the city of Bellevue Assessment List shall be made from the Campbell County Property Evaluation Administrator Assessment List after it has been supervised and corrected by the county board of equalization. Section 2, the rate of taxation for the city of Bellevue, Kentucky for the fiscal year July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2016 shall be .318 of each $100 of assessed valuation for real estate, except and subject to ordinance 2005-5-4 and .327 of each $100 of assessed valuation for personal property. All of said amounts shall be and is hereby taxed for the general fund of the city. Section 3, a lien is hereby created against all property in the city of Bellevue to secure payment of the ad lorm tax provided herein. Said lien shall exist and be enforceable for a period of 10 years from the date of assessment and shall not during such period be defeated or ceased to exist except by payment of said tax. Payment of said tax shall satisfy said lien and shall release and discharge the property concerned therefrom.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Matt Oliver, second by Steve Cadulli, to approve ordinance 2015-9-1 for its first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Kirk Colerole?
Cadulli?
Yes.
Tatum?
Yes.
Ologist?
Yes.
Slater?
No.
Salzman?
Yes.
Can I ask a question on our taxes? Why do we not allow residents to make payments? I mean, if somebody can't...
They only give them 30 days to pay.
I know. Here's my thinking. I mean, this is just coming from a person who lives, you know, paycheck to paycheck. Like most of Bellevue is, one, it's the month before Christmas, two, most people pay their income tax, their taxes like that with income tax return, which they don't normally get until January, February, and March. Why can't, I mean, I realize they're still going to pay interest and penalties on whatever they haven't paid, but why can't they make an initial payment or a monthly payment to, once that is assessed?
I'm not totally certain. There are state rules that regulate property tax payments. Before we would take that on, we'd have to really consider about what kind of, you know, are we, we would have to examine, currently right now, if you pay your bill, you either pay it before you, or it's not paid. That's the way it is. And if you think about it, we get into any type of assessment or whatever, it's, normally that's the way it's set up. We've never thought about, or at least as far as I've been here, we've never thought about taking out payment or payment plan. I don't think it's necessarily a prudent thing on behalf of the city, but without looking at it any further, that would be my first answer to it.
And you can pay late. You just pay late.
Yeah.
I mean, not to be funny, if you know that, if you have a mortgage on your home and you know that your payment is $700 a month, whatever month, you take X amount of dollars on your paycheck and you put aside for your mortgage payment, you do the same thing for your taxes and insurance, same thing else.
Well, I'd relate that, but if you look at a majority of Bellevue, or a lot of people in Bellevue just can't afford to take that much of it.
Most majority of people are not late. Majority of people escrow, just pay it. Sorry?
Right. Most people do that escrow.
That's true.
You are correct.
There's a lot of us that don't, and that's that paycheck, paycheck thing that hurts, especially when you only have a 30-day window, because we don't find out, well, normally we didn't find out, you know, too much ahead of time. Usually this meeting, the public hearing was in October, I believe, when years passed.
Yeah, so by the time, it's got to be, there are specific rules.
All right, my mistake.
I was just curious.
Maybe a little more time too.
Yeah.
Well, but then again, we don't really know what that rate's going to be because it's all based upon what Campbell County's...
No, I mean, more, more time to pay it instead of the 30 days, maybe six weeks, maybe seven weeks. 60 days?
Then we have to take a look at it from...
How's that affect our residents?
From our cash flow for the city. I know that in some cases that, I know in some cases other cities take out tax anticipatory notes, which is the last thing that they want to do. Would we be in that kind of situation? I mean, if you, I was always taught in the MPA school that you avoid that as much as possible, just because you're borrowing money to satisfy a debt that you, it doesn't make sense. So we may be, we're bound in terms of cash flow problem, we're bound in terms of cash flow, we'd be bound in terms of what the PVA gets to us. So this window is as far as we, is as far extended as we've got it right now. So.
Yeah, just curious.
It actually turns out that it's about six weeks because the day after the...
Taxes will be mailed after the second reading.
They get mailed out, so you have six weeks until the end of November.
Then you only have, what I was saying, you only have 30 days to get it paid.
You have 12 months, every year. The general taxes every year.
Taxes aren't going to stop coming. You got 12 months.
Like, you know, you know.
They're coming this year, especially if they're coming next year.
A lot of older people who are living check to check, like Melissa said, it's hard for them to come up with all that money in just, you know, a short amount of time. Someday you guys will get there and find out, hopefully.
We maybe need to just class it on budgeting.
That would be good too.
Moving on to item D, order, motion to read order 2015-9-1, accepting appointment to the Order of Kentucky Regional Ethics Authority.
Motion.
Motion by Steve Cadulli, second. Second by Dave Slater. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Still ordered.
Order 2015-9-1, order accepting the reappointment of Marcus Carey, Daniel Cright, Darrell Cummings, Robert F. Green, Carolyn Lanhardt, and Tom Quirk, and appointment of Robert Sanders as members of the Northern Kentucky Regional Ethics Authority Enforcement Committee for a two-year term commencing February 1st, 2015 and expiring on January 31st, 2017. Whereas ordinance number 94-11-2 has amended, established a code of ethical conduct applicable to the officers and employees of the city of Bellevue and its agencies. And whereas the city of Bellevue admitted to an interlocal agreement to join the Northern Kentucky Regional Ethics Authority, the NKREA, to implement said code of ethics. And whereas Article 3A of the interlocal gives the NKREA Authority Board the authorization to select members of the NKREA Enforcement Committee, subject to the approval of each member's jurisdictions relevant for a legislative body. Whereas at the NKREA's annual meeting held October 22nd, 2014, the Authority Board renominated Marcus Carey, Daniel Cright, Darrell Cummings, Robert F. Green, Carolyn Lanhardt, and Tom Quirk to serve, each serve a two-year term on the NKREA Enforcement Committee. Whereas NKREA Enforcement Committee member Mary Kay Malloy Brusant resigned, Robert Sanders was appointed by the NKREA Authority Board to fill Mary Kay Malloy's term. And now therefore being resolved by the city of Bellevue of Campbell County, Kentucky, section 1, that the appointment of Marcus Carey, Daniel Cright, Darrell Cummings, Robert F. Green, Robert Sanders, Carolyn Lanhardt, and Tom Quirk as members of the NKREA Enforcement Committee for a two-year term commencing on February 1st, 2015 and expiring on January 31st, 2017 is hereby approved. Section 2, that this order shall take effect and be in full force when passed and recorded according to law.
Heard the reading of order 2015-9-1, appointing our representative, Tom Quirk, and the rest of the board.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Melissa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Just under comments, Tom Searcy also serves on our fire board and he's on table board. Just a great volunteer for the city and thank you for your services.
Thanks, Tom.
I'm here to serve.
We appreciate you. He's also a former council member also. Took on that role for a while, but continues to serve, so thank you. Moving on to item C, approval necessary for closing part of Covert Run for the annual Bellevue van competition.
Motion.
Motion by Steve, second by Steve, or Dave Slater. That's on the 26th.
26th. And we want to close from 8 to 8. It'll be modified as we learn the hours of the competition.
They've heard.
I've done the first year, that's what we did. Had no issues.
They had that first year and last year, and if you've never seen, it's phenomenal, the logistics that went into it, and it ran smooth as to be. It was phenomenal last year.
I think we voted when I asked them, under order.
Yes.
I didn't do your poll.
Okay. I didn't, I missed it. Okay.
Shouldn't anyone have an order, do they?
No. Okay. Just ordered. I'm still in.
Usually we block at Barry to about Bobbical's driveway for them. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Item D, which is not on your agenda because we just got a memo out today about homecoming parade.
I was going to ask you about that.
Which will take place on a week from tomorrow, Thursday, at 6:30. It will be, once again, forming at 6 o'clock here at the Callahan Center. I'm assuming the route is the same?
Yes.
And we'll see, Don Poplar, Don Taylor, Cross Covert Run, Tiger Lane.
Yes.
Okay.
Ends with the Powderpuff Games at the stadium, which is a lot of fun to watch.
Motion to approve the parade.
Motion.
Second by Dave, second by Melissa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Still ordered. Say the date one more time. It's Thursday.
Thursday.
Next Thursday.
The 17th.
The 26th? Thursday.
17th.
The 17th. Yes, that's 17th.
Which day is it?
Thursday, the 17th.
Sometime this month. We all have to do something.
One week from tomorrow. One week from tomorrow.
Anybody wishes to participate, they're always welcome to walk the parade.
The football game's 18. Tomorrow is, it's my birthday. It's the 17th.
I'm missing some of my schedule. She's just correct, I mean, it's fine.
I mean, all the new business on the agenda, move on to announcements. Anybody have any announcements to make?
I do, I have all kinds and I can't find my notes. There they are. This is all for school stuff, so we have our Little Hoopsters program that normally runs in January and February is actually being bumped up this year due to gym restrictions. It really hurts only having one gym, one gym to use in Bellevue for all ages. So our Little Hoopster program, which is for ages four to eight, boys and girls from all over, it will be ran now in December, or November and December. So I'm taking registrations, being sent to the high school until October the 1st. Grandview is also starting their Girls on the Run. This is our third year for having girls on the run, which is an amazing program for girls that are in grades third through fifth. Once we complete that, this is where we end up with our girls end up running a 5K and we'll have a practice 5K down at the stadium where we ask all community members to come and cheer the girls on for 12 weeks of hard work to prepare for the race. They are always looking for donations for their end of the year celebration for the girls. This is a huge feat for some of these girls to complete. You see some girls that go from shy and just backwards and just don't want to be there to the most bright, energetic, ready-to-run girl by the end. It's a really great program. So if you're interested in that, they're always looking for donations or even running buddies for the race, which is held over in Cincinnati. We always need running buddies. And you don't have to be able to run, we do have girls at walk. Grandview's having their Fall Festival on October the 2nd from 5 o'clock until 8 o'clock, and that's always a great time. Unfortunately, they didn't have it last year, so they're trying to get it back and as strong as it used to be. And they do donation, or, I'm sorry, they do raffle baskets of all different themes, so each grade or program has a different, if you're looking to donate for anything like that, you could contact Grandview and they'd have that list, or I can even get that for you. Bellevue High School is doing an ink recycling program for inkjet cartridges, laser cartridges. If your company or you use them, instead of throwing them in the garbage, send them up to the high school. Our kids get money back for that. So if you have those, we have a big box in the front office specifically for those, and then we have a company that'll come and pick them up. They're also doing, both schools this year, I believe, are doing box tops and labels. So even if you don't have kids in the home and you have box tops, send them to the high school, send them to the elementary. They could always use them. They could always use them. And I had the homecoming week, but that's already been taken care of, and then that's it.
Yeah, on the Garden of Parks, friends of Bellevue, they're going to...Jody talked a little bit about this, they're going to have a craft beer booth, they're going to have two craft beers down there, and they're also raffling off a really nice dollhouse. It's pretty good size. You can get six raffle tickets for $5 on that, and they will be drawing the winner of that dollhouse at 4:30 Saturday.
Just want to state again that Form 8 code works thanks to Scott and Arby's and the people that realized that that's all over land, and they worked to complete the project. So I'm glad that it made it.
I'd also raise that there's been some discussion about succession plans. I think I've talked to a lot of y'all about that. I know our most recent monthly Kentucky Cities Magazine or whatever also brought that up. Keith and I have chatted about that a couple times. I think that we're making sure that we have a succession plan in place so that if, God forbid, Ed is detained without us knowing about it and without being able to designate somebody before a meeting begins, that we have some kind of plan in place. So Keith's going to look at that, and maybe that's something that if there needs to be an ordinance on that, which I'm pretty sure that would need to be an ordinance, that we would establish it. I think everything that's been discussed at this point would be based on seniority and just for running the meetings and all of the other fringe benefits that come with the office.
Can I give a suggestion about the stop sign? Down in Aurora, Indiana, there's a stop sign that says, right under the stop sign, it says, "Rolling stops, $125. Full stops are free." And I've never seen anybody go through that. They stop all the way, and then they go. That might be something. Wouldn't cost very much money to do. I think it'd work well.
Might be some fun, actually.
We've got a first, a second, and a third. All those in favor?
Make a motion and we go on executive session for KRS 61.810, section A.
You did do a good job.
Okay. I'm sorry. Anybody else have announcements?
Hello, that's good welfare.
That was good welfare. Anybody else have any good announcements?
When we're going to look into a sound system? Seriously, that's time, okay? I mean, every, you know, I think six out of the last eight months, nine months, I've said something. I think we really need to do something.
You know, honestly, part of it stems from the fact that we...
Don't lean into our minds to talk. I mean, it's...
If we do, if we talk, I mean, our normal conversation is loud, but we're a lot more effective if we lean into our mic. So it might be, I mean, I've been trying to make conscious choice tonight to bring it close. I mean, I look at it and like I'm...
Most people don't sit like this to talk. Most people will sit like this. And even right here, even right here, it doesn't.
Pull it closer, then. I mean, the thing is, there's some tweaks we want to try first. I mean, please, it could be the...
Let's save mine.
We can put a sign on it.
There you go. Stickers are. So, yeah.
Let me try to adjust the system as it is first.
Thank you. Because people would watch this, too. They always complain.
Until we get it changed, if we can make the effort to talk to them, that would be great, and then...
Because we'll be... I've sat here this whole meeting, the mic's been off. It's on now.
Second by Ryan, you go in the executive session in accordance with KRS 61-10, section A. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So ordered. So ordered.